I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Townes Stollerton Council meeting May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, five thirty P M start time. We're meeting via Zoom due to the pandemic and the restrictions that are in place for province of Nova Scotia. First item is the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I'd like to add a police letter, please.
Okay, we'll make a police letter number ten. Open form eleven, next council twelve, adjourned thirteen. Is that good for everybody?
Yep.
Have a motion to approve, please.
So move.
Move by council night, second by councillor pencil. If there's my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Approval minutes are next. They distribute electronically. They're also part of the packets or any areas of emissions.
I'll move the minutes as written, your worship.
I'll second that.
Moved by councillor Penn, second by deputy mayor Luanne. All those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Here and then we'll move on to item four proclamation. There's three of them this evening. The first one is proclamation aligned disease awareness month. May two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas lawn disease is a serious illness caused by the bite of a black-legged tick infected with the bacteria and borrelia burgdorferia. And whereas black-legged ticks carry a variety of diseases or illnesses can now be found in all parts of Nova Scotia. Whereas awareness, education, and proxy preventive measures such as daily tick checks and proper tick removal can help reduce your chance of contracting tick-borne diseases. Therefore, be resolved that I, Mayor Dan McGilgan, Stollerton Town Council do hereby declare May twenty-first of line disease awareness month. We take a three different motions for these or one more? Okay, so kind of most of that, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
I second.
Moved by councillor Campbell, second by councillor Pence. All those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Next is the proclamation access awareness week. Whereas the week of May thirtieth to June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one is recognized as access awareness week. And access awareness week aims to celebrate achievements made by both both by and for persons with disabilities in the areas of accessibility, transportation, housing, employment, recreation, education, and communication. And this is the thirty-fourth year of the public awareness initiative taking place in Nova Scotia. And access awareness week promotes the inclusion of all Nova Scotia disabilities as full assistance within our communities. And through public awareness, community partnerships, and education, this campaign aims to foster an environment of equal participation for person with disabilities within Townes Stollerton. Therefore, be resolved that I, Mayor Dan McGilgan, Stollerton Town Council do hereby proclaim May thirtieth to June fifth, two thousand and twenty-one is access awareness week in Townes Stollerton. Kind of motion that effect, please.
So move.
That was moved by deputy mayor Luanne, and second by councillor Pence, I believe.
Oh, alright. Councillor Knight, your worship.
Oh, sorry. Make that change for the minutes, please. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you very much. Now, the third proclamation is World Lupus Day. Whereas lupus is a severe and unpredictable autoimmune disease that can cause life-threatening damage to any organ in the body. Whereas lupus is a global health problem that affects millions of young women, men, and children of all nationalities, races, ethnicities, genders, and ages worldwide. Whereas there remains low public awareness and understanding of lupus symptoms and health effects relative to its significant impact on lives of people with lupus. And whereas many primary care physicians are not fully aware of all the signs and symptoms of lupus, causing people with lupus to suffer for many years before they obtain a diagnosis and begin treatment. And whereas people with lupus need access to medical specialists and high-quality multiple disciplinary care, including emotional, psychological, and social care. And whereas there's an urgent need to develop tools that will improve patient and physician communications. And whereas medical research efforts to find the cause of lupus create useful tools to monitor disease activity and develop more targeted and tolerable treatments are under scrutiny in comparison with diseases of similar magnitude severity. And whereas there's a deep, unmet need worldwide to educate supporting individuals affected by lupus, including their family members and caregivers. Now, therefore, be resolved that the tenth of May, two thousand and twenty-one, it's here about its designated as World Lupus Day. On which lupus organizations around the globe call attention to the need for increase in public and private sector funding for medical research on lupus, education programs for health professionals and patients, and improved access to quality medical care for people with lupus. Kind of most of that, please.
I'll move.
Moved by councillor Pence, second by councillor Campbell. Those things are saying aye.
Alright, aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you very much. Move on to five reports from staff, five A, chief mayor Colback, Stollerton Police Service report included. We met last Thursday. Believe it was last Thursday, the police commission, we've been through this in detail. Is there any questions or comments in the chief's report? If not.
I'll second that.
Moved by councillor Knight, second by councillor Campbell. Those things were saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Five B is fire chief Michael Sullivan, fire department.
I move that we accept the report as written, your worship.
Second that motion.
Thank you. On the question, I just want to mention the report states that the Stollerton Fire Department has started responding to medical calls again for cardiac arrest calls, members where their P P E. And things look like they're getting a little bit busy. We got seven calls this month. I think that's more than the previous, maybe because it's springtime now, but just wanted to bring those to the public's attention. So all those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Five C, Paige Clark, marketing communications.
Good evening, mayor and council. My report has been submitted. There are no changes. However, I would like to talk on the citizen alert app just briefly. In the report, it's mentioned that relevant staff and myself would be receiving training. Noah and I attended that session last week, and there were a few items to that that even I didn't, I wasn't fully aware of before we got this app. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that we also will have the ability with this app to upload PDF documents as well as web links so that people will be able to quickly access the information we're putting out. And I'm really excited about that. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. I think we're all excited about the app, the potential launch of the launch of the app. And I think when we do launch, we should use some media coverage on as well. I think to let our citizens know it's out there. Any questions for Paige?
I move for that court to be passed.
I'll second it.
Moved by deputy mayor Luanne, second by councillor Pence. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you Paige. Five D, Blaine Mary, ten engineer.
Dude, good evening, everyone. Although it's not part of my April report, I would like to mention that we will be starting Jawsman M I B testing next week. And that will continue until the end of July. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Blaine. And that's referring to the water odor and taste problem in the summertime?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I have a question, Blaine.
Yeah.
And you say here, the engineering staff are reviewing the popular street stormwater project. Will our town workers be allowed, be able to do a lot of that?
Yeah, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be able to use our own staff to do the majority of that ourselves, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Is that gonna be a substantial savings there, Blaine?
There will be some savings, yeah.
Great.
Good to hear.
Yeah. Blaine, go ahead.
Don't go ahead, councillor Pence.
No, I was just gonna say, Blaine, I noticed up in Allen Park, I don't know if if you were aware of it or not, I noticed an old stump up there and it's all it looks very rigid, like if a kid fell on it, it might hurt itself. I thought for safety reasons, you should maybe have a look at that tomorrow.
Yeah, we can have a look at that. Is that something we removed during construction or is it in the construction zone or?
No, it's right in the park, Blaine. I think it was a tree that might have fell last fall or something.
Oh, Allen Park, sorry. I thought he's, okay, yeah, okay, Allen Park. I thought you said Allen Victoria Project, okay.
No, no.
And the questions? On the engineering and public works report, Blaine, number four.
I know what you're gonna ask.
Yeah, that's where it's supposed to be.
Are you on number twenty-one?
Number four. A small section that needs requirement on the town hall roof project.
Yeah, sorry, that's the, there's the front end of the roof. That's the capital project that you guys approved?
Yeah.
So it's required to be reinstatement, is that what you're?
Yeah, it has to be. Basically, we're gonna strap in put steel over top of the old asphalt roof that's on one, the front corner, front portion of the slope group.
Okay, thank you. And I notice number seven, the staff did garbage pickup around town, did a really good job. Thank you. I'm wondering in front of the post office, there used to be a garbage can in front of there. Now it's littered with Tim Hortons cups and stuff. Why don't we put the garbage can back there?
Yeah, we removed that one point in time because people abused it. I think, I believe that's the one.
It was always filled, that's for sure.
Yeah, they put it out, maybe filled the next day with, I think, a lot of people put their garbage in that particular can.
What can we do to keep that area clean? This looks really messy right now. It hasn't since the snow melted.
Yeah, well, we'll have to take a look at it, Danny.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if that's, it's probably our property, not the post office in the city, but the post office also, their concrete work looks, is pretty deteriorate, the ramp and the stairs and stuff.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we should write letters or just let it go for a little while longer? Maybe if you want to have a look and see what kind of shape you think it's in?
Their own property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't look good. It's starting to look unsightly almost.
Okay, that would be, so you're saying the ramp is deteriorating on the?
The ramp and the stairs themselves of the post office, yeah.
Okay.
You want us to have a look and see what you think of it? Maybe let us know.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the case, they would, they would have to fix it, right?
Exactly, yeah.
We can certainly submit pictures in a letter to Canada Post.
Just why don't we do that, Danny?
I think it's a good idea.
Can I get a motion for that?
I would so move.
I'll second it.
Moved by councillor Penn, second by councillor Campbell. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Okay, Nancy, thank you. Oh, I want to thank you, Blaine, for the safety portion of this report.
Yes, that's really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for safety. I think my father always said, safety first, so I'm really happy to see this in here. And on the, on the water side. I've never met, Kirk Conley must be one of our new employees.
Kirk Conley is, worked with CoGen.
Okay, okay. That's why I never met him before.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all my questions. Is there anything else that anyone want to mention? We have a motion for the reports, please.
So move.
I'll second.
Moved by councillor Pence, second by deputy mayor Luanne. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Thank you, Blaine.
Thank you.
Five E, introduction of Noah as the Lord of active community living coordinator.
Yeah, hi, everybody. My name's Noah. I graduated from Dallas University in April two thousand and twenty within the Recreation and Management Program. What a time to graduate in the field of recreation, I might add. I'm really excited to provide and support sport and recreation opportunities to our community members while also creating and exploring new opportunities. I look forward to help make an already great town even better. Thanks.
Thank you, Noah. Really happy to be on board. It's part of our team. We have a really strong staff team here at the Townes Stollerton. We expect you'll complement that team very well. We look forward to working with you.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Okay, so we don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
No.
We'll move on to correspondent six A's email from Lisa McDonald regarding letter to Mayor Dixon funeral cost members of fire department.
I think, your worship, what we should do is draw in our budgetary time. Next spring, we'll have a look at that and see what what we think.
What is the request itself?
Is that a request from the government or for the town, Susan?
From my understanding, it's, it's their intent that they request funeral expenses for for volunteer fire departments, but they didn't specify exactly. I don't know if they want a letter of support or
Yeah, that's
not sure if Chief Michael Sullivan is still on, if he want, if he is aware of anything.
Oh, this is the first I heard of it.
Yeah, okay.
Have you checked into it? Maybe the chief can check into it or Susan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, your worship.
It's not, it's addressed to the executive funeral service in Nova Scotia.
Yeah, so it was received from the town of New Glasgow, and as you can see there, attaches a letter that was sent to the mayor, and she was asked to reach out to our neighboring municipalities as you have volunteer firefighters. The request is to take the letter to your councils for discussion. The letter is not really applicable to the town of New Glasgow. So, yeah, so that's yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. It would be nice to get some more information on it. When I read it, it looks like they're asking the funeral powers as well to give a cut rate. That's what I got out of it when I read it, so. Be nice to get some more information, I think. Are you able to help us out with that? Who, me?
Sure.
No, Mike. Mike, not me.
Yeah, maybe I can you know, get the information from you and
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll table that for now. And we'll move on to five B, letter from Minister Brandon McGuire.
Yes, so each year, the province is required to send a twelve-month letter, and what these letters provide is just basically a heads up, I guess, for what's gonna happen in twelve months. So this is the twelve-month letter that we received this year. There isn't really a lot that the town of Stollerton is affected by. And nothing that we really didn't know. So yeah, so it's, it's basically talking about, the only thing that we really are affected was the Accessibility Act. The the deadline was extended to two thousand and twenty-two, which was fine. We're well, we're well on track to get that. We were very close to getting it for the original date, which was April twenty twenty twenty-one. So we're, we're well on our track for that. And the other thing is the library funding, which we were aware of as well. So nothing, nothing really significant that will impact the town of Stollerton.
Thank you for that summary. Appreciate it. Six C, letter from Eastern Mainland Housing Authority Representative Nancy Terrace Christine Pike.
So our mainland, Eastern Mainland Housing Authority Representative Nancy Terrace wrote this letter. She wrote it to Christine Pike, who is the I think she's the general manager of the area, and she just CC'd it to the town of Stollerton, and she's just in talking about the state, and she would like them to do something about it. So it's just a CC to the town of Stollerton for our information.
Thank you. And five D email from Nancy Dix regarding V O N week.
Yes, so my understanding is V O N week is taking place on May twenty-third to twenty-ninth, and she said a number of activities are being planned. She's been asked to reach out to the municipalities with a request. V O N is asking that communities put up or shine blue lights on Monday, May twenty-fourth to celebrate. So we do have some blue lights that we have used in the past. So if council wishes, we can certainly make that happen for, to honor the V O N.
I certainly don't have a problem with it. I would, do we need a motion to that effect, Susan, or do we just general agreement?
Just a motion would be fine with that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, we go ahead with the blue lights. What area, Susan, or did it specifically?
Typically, when we've used it in the past, it was, it was in December, so it was a lot more dark earlier. So we find it on the town hall. That's how.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Move by councillor Pence, second by deputy mayor Luanne. Just on the question, the V O N does, as we all know, does a lot of really good, good work in the community. It helps the most, people need it the most, and help you people, keep people in the homes longer, too, which saves the taxpayers money, so. We'd be happy to do this for them. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring, thank you unanimously. Item seven, committee of the whole report.
Following recommendations are for council's consideration from the committee of the whole meeting, virtually held on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Number one, on recommendation of committee of the whole, council approved the donation of three hundred dollars to the Northumberland Regional High School for their Karma Closet Project. Number two, on recommendation of committee of the whole, council approved the donation of one hundred dollars to New Leaf for a business card add in their cookbook. On recommendation, number three, committee of the whole approved the patching tender received from S W Weeks Limited for the amount of fifty-one thousand, thirty-one, and twenty-five, including H S T, as it was the lowest bid received. Number four, council, committee of the whole, council approved the Allen and Victoria Infrastructure Upgrades Tender received from S W Weeks Construction Limited for the amount of nine hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents, including H S T, as it was the lowest bid received. Number five, on recommendation of committee of the whole, council approved the use of a portion of capital reserves up to ninety thousand dollars to reroute the storm sewer for Call Avenue. And recommendation number six, committee of the whole, council approved the parking plan for Ford Street.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we accept the recommendations put forward at committee of the whole.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by councillor Pence, second by councillor Knight. All those affairs, my saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Item eight, decision of the Nova Scotia Utilian Review Board regarding twenty-five Bunker Hill.
So this went to appeal from PQ Properties regarding twenty-five Bunker Hill and council. Council did not make a decision in December of two thousand and twenty, so therefore it was appealed and it went through the U A R B, and they ruled in favor of PQ Properties. So what I need from council is, number one, I need a motion to accept this. I also need a motion for, to accept the statement of facts, and the statement of facts is basically literally a statement of all the facts that took place, which was approved by myself, the town planner, and the lawyer that we had representing us for this. And I also need a decision on which, on which council, if they wish to appeal this decision. So first of all, I would like a request, or sorry, receive for information on the, the decision of the board.
For that person?
Yep.
So we're gonna receive this as information with this motion. Got a motion for it, please?
I'll move.
Second.
I'll second it.
I believe that was moved by councillor Knight, second by councillor Campbell. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you.
Okay, so the next thing I need approval for is a statement of facts. So this is literally what I, what it says. It's literally a timeline of what went on between the town and PQ Properties. And as I mentioned before, it was it was authenticated by our planner, myself, and the lawyer representing the town. So I would need a
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by councillor Penn, second by councillor Knight. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded.
And
honestly, thank you.
And the final thing that I need direction is if council wishes to appeal the decision of the Nova Scotia Utilian Review Board.
No.
We fought the battle as long as we could.
No, that's right, Dan. I agree.
Okay, so if I can have a motion that you do not wish to appeal.
I'll move that we don't.
Now seconded.
Moved by councillor Knight, second by councillor Campbell. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, just a question for the clerk. How much did that venture cost us, cost the town exactly?
Five thousand and seven hundred dollars.
So we decided not to make a decision on this issue, knowing that we're not following the rules, and that cost the town five thousand seven hundred.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Well, you know what, Simon? I would agree with you.
Councillor Pence.
I would agree with you, Simon, but I think it was four thousand dollars well spent due to the fact that there was people down there that didn't want it, and I'll be damned honest with you, Simon. I wouldn't want it next to me, but it's in the planning act, and we had no other choice. Thank you, councillor Luanne.
Thank you, councillor Pence. I appreciate that. And that was my point, is that it was in the planning act, so there was nothing we can do about it. Our, our position was more symbolic than anything else.
Yeah. And I'm hoping councillor Luanne that when we're looking at the L U B, that they look at this situation, which I don't know if there's another area in town where this could happen, but they should
Happen anywhere in town.
It can happen anywhere in town, Gary.
Yeah.
So I think unless we change the bylaws, yeah, unless we change the bylaws, there's nothing we can do about it. And that's the thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't have to stop, wouldn't have to stop the planning advisory committee should be looking at and coming back for a recommendation.
We are, that's a review on land use bylaws now, the planning bylaws are ready.
Good, thank you.
Move on to item nine. We already talked with this committee, the whole recommendation with the Townes Stollerton parking plan approval.
That's correct, mayor, and I just put it on there just in case anyone wanted to talk about it, but it has been approved by you. I just didn't, as this is a council meeting, I wanted to make sure the public was aware.
Thank you. I'm glad it is on there. Is Blaine still with us?
No, he isn't, but if there's something I can answer, I'll try.
I'll just, the plan is driven by provincial motor vehicle safety protocols, and more than protocols, there are laws. So you can't park so close to a crosswalk or so close to a driveway or intersection. So basically, what we're doing is fixing the main street to abide by the provincial laws regarding parking. We're gonna keep free parking on Main Street. We don't know, no thoughts at all about charging for parking on Main Street, but we are gonna paint in lines and installs parking stalls. Blaine mentioned stall sixty in front of the library, designated additional accessible stall of council in agreement. Just wondering if council should be, should we need more information before we make that call or?
Being on the accessibility, being on the accessibility committee, I say yes, we need a handicap zone or accessibility zone in front of the library.
I agree. How's the rest of council feel?
I agree with councillor Knight there. I mean, Brian and that group with the accessibility, they would know more than I, your worship.
And he also says going forward that these will have to be a pedestrian ramp to access the sidewalk, so we should do that, I think.
Yeah.
And the bus zone is, well, I know, I think Blaine knows, but it's moved, it's not in front of the R C F Hall. It's on Queen Street now, across Tim Hortons. Answer all my comments. Anyone else want to make any comments or questions? Okay, can we have a motion? Do we have a motion to accept it then, please?
So move, your worship.
I'll second it.
Moved by councillor Pence, second by councillor Knight. All those affairs, my saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, most caring Nancy, thank you. Item ten is police letter.
Thank you, your worship. At a recent meeting of the police commission, we recognized a great job of police forces doing. They have closed down four drunk houses, working hard to build a community-based police force. Recently, we received letters from the Justice Department, Pictor County firefighters, and mental health. All recognizing our police force and the great job they're doing. I've had comments from, several comments from Pat Dunn's office in working with our police force. I've had comments from several citizens on how they conducted themselves, even some that were stopped in a traffic stop in the way they were, they were handled. So at the police commission meeting, what they want the council, this was the mayor and the council, was sending a letter of recommendation, and it was tossed around about, we, it was all inspired by the one letter that came on one drug, the, a drug house that was closed down by the school. But in the, in the conversation with, with, um, the group, we, we don't, we don't want to target or, 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 uh, pinpoint one or two police officers, because this year is across-the-board effort. All our police force, all our officers have been doing a great job. The other thing, the leadership, police chief has been doing a great job in leadership, and we're, and things are working really well. So what I'm asking, I'm making a motion that we send a letter or a commendation to the police force that they can hang up on the wall. Uh, thank you, Noah, and, um, pointing the fact that we appreciate the work, the job that they're doing.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, and, uh, moved by councillor Knight, seconded by deputy mayor Luanne, on the question, I fully agree, it's at the, the same police commission meeting, but, uh, we made a great hire with the police chief, and it's showing it's, uh, it's paying dividends now, and I think the police department's in the best shape, it's been a long time with, uh, and they're, it's really shown with their work, like you say, four drug houses down in Stellerton in the last six months or so, it's, uh, that's a significant feat for our police department, we already want to thank them, so I'm on the question, all those affairs are saying aye.
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 Host, motion carrying Nancy, thank you. All right, number eleven?
Mayor, between yourself and, uh, and our clerk, you can dra, draft up a letter for us?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item, uh, eleven is open forum. Does anyone have some register for the open forum?
We did not receive any requests to join the meeting.
Okay, so next council meeting is June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty PM, we don't know if that'll be Zoom or not yet, I don't think.
I hope it's regular.
We hope it's regular, that's for sure. Okay, can I motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Moved by deputy mayor Luanne, we're adjourned.
Sorry.